Pledge allegiance to Michael Finley, the lead of this inquiry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we ask that you would give our city's leaders wisdom this evening as they make decisions about our city. We thank you for each of them giving of themselves in order to serve our city. Father, we also pray for those who protect us at home and abroad. We ask that you would watch over them and keep them safe. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
There'll be a change to the agenda or an addition to the agenda in the Public Works section. There'll be some declaring of surplus items that needs to take place, but other than that, I don't think there's anything else as a Doug that needs to be changed on the agenda.
It's our attorney thinks we need to cover anything? No.
We approve the agenda with a change.
Second.
Okay, second by Michael Finley. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Attachment A is minutes from the January 18th meeting, excuse me, June 18th meeting. You all had an opportunity to look that over. I didn't see anything that I thought needed to be changed.
We accept the minutes as presented?
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Parker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. As with this time of the year, I close out fiscal year, so we don't have a financial statement in our packet. We'll have our next one on August the first. So with that, we'll move right into Citizens' Delegation, and Ms. Rice is first. Appreciate you coming tonight.
I appreciate y'all asking. I just wanted to talk just a minute about the new ambulance service or the old ambulance service, however you want to talk about it. We are the same people that we were three months ago. There are seventeen of us that was still there. We have just different uniforms and different trucks. Our new truck, our new fleet of trucks, which I'm very happy to see will be here next week and you'll be seeing them. Right now, the county is renting our old or leasing our old ambulances until our new fleet came in, and we've got that down to we only have two of those left because the other ones have, they're just worn out. This has been a good move for us. We've had a lot more opportunities for training, a lot more opportunity for new equipment. And I'm not saying anything bad about the county. I worked with the county or worked for the county for thirty-eight years, but they were not in a position to provide us with the equipment. Splash, we were able to get an ambulance once every so often, and I think our newest one was in 2008. The one we got in 2009, we got on a grant from the Trauma Commission. This service is very active in the communities, and you may find that out, they've already joined the Chamber of Commerce in Pellum and Camilla. They've already bought an ad for Better Hometown. They supported me when I was in Play-Doh. They're just, they want to be in the community. We're trying to update a lot of things, working with the first responders. We just gave Pellum Fire Department and Camilla Fire Department an automatic blood pressure monitor for them to use for well-being of the firemen, as well as walk-ins. They have a lot of walk-ins. People check their blood pressure. But I'll be glad to answer any questions about EMS. We still attend football games and watch over football games and athletic events at no charge. We still go around and talk about and provide CPR classes and first aid classes to people. We, I'm trying to think of everything we do. We have not raised our rates. I'm just thinking about all the things that I've gotten calls about. We have not raised our rates. Our billing is still the same as it's been for twelve years. That company still does the billing for us, which is part of the company that we're with now. We already have a relationship established with them, but it's a very good Christian private company. These are very good people, good people, and they're known all over the state. They operate EMS in eight other counties besides Mitchell. And we are benefiting from volume of having more access to training and more access to new equipment and a lot of new techniques that are coming down the line for EMS and EMS Agenda for the Future and scope of practice. We'll be seeing a lot of changes in EMS all across the nation in the next few years. But I do welcome you, if you've got any questions or if you want to come by and look at the new ambulance. You have an ambulance here twenty-four hours a day in Pellum, and they probably see it zipping up and down the road a good bit because we are busy here in Pellum. We have a twenty-four hour ambulance in Camilla, and we have a sixteen-hour ambulance in Bakington that works from seven in the morning till eleven at night, Monday through Saturday, and that's purely based on call volume. We don't make a lot of calls in Bakington after midnight, but the crew that is up there that gets off at eleven, if one of the trucks, other trucks are out, they'll stay until the other truck gets back in the county. They have stayed up there all night before. It just happens that way sometimes, but they say that so we're making sure the county's covered. Since starting, well, Monday, and I can't remember what the date was, not this Monday, last Monday, we started at, we have added a day trucks, and now there are four trucks in the county during the day. This truck works from nine until six in the evening, and it's mostly handling transfers out of the hospital, so the other trucks are able to do 911 calls because they have found that we are that busy. You know, we've told them, but we spend a lot of time going out of the county. We try to support this hospital here, but as y'all know, it doesn't have orthopedics, it doesn't do OBs. So there's a lot of things we pick up that cannot come here, but every other case, we try to come here to the local hospital, try to keep the money in the county. But if y'all got any questions, I welcome them.
I guess the thing I've heard maybe the most is chatter among citizens or comments was you could speak to the response time that, you know, it's been...
Well, what response times? When somebody's called me and looked at that, I've seen that all the ambulances were out. We, you know, people really didn't call and ask me. They just talked to other people. And the ones that...
Well, I saw where they had paper bag, which was pretty close.
Well, the ones, I know the grand jury investigation showed that it takes us three minutes longer, and that may have been in May due to us trying to learn. Their trucks are state-of-the-art. It has GPS and math and ABL all right there. We have one touch button. We touch, but we don't even have to talk to dispatch. Now, we still use 911 in Mitchell County to dispatch us, so right now, we're reporting the 911 in Mitchell County, and we will continue because they keep times too. So we keep the 911 times in Camilla, and then we keep the 911 times that they're keeping with us in Macon. We're talking to them through Southern Link, but the Southern Link is such in the ambulances that they just do one button. When we get a call, they push a button. They know we're around because they're seeing us on their computer screen. They're tracking us everywhere we go. This company is very innovative, and you know, when I saw the grand jury, I found that hard to believe because the medics have a minute and fifteen seconds to have their honey in the seat driving. And if they are not, I get an email. If they spend over thirty minutes at a hospital, I get an email. If they drive over eighty miles an hour, I get an email, and then I'm to follow up on that. So it's very technically managed, but it's, I think it's all pretty good. But May, I think that was a bad month. I told Clark I'd like to see him come back maybe and do June and see what the difference is because I really think May was a bad month to look at. But that's what the grand jury wanted, and that's what we did. But response times, I think, are better. We still, sometimes you're, we're just going to be busy. I could have twenty ambulances, and that's not enough. And we've had a couple of cases where we could have used five in one day, and it's just, that's the nature of the, that's why they call it emergency services because, I mean, if we could plan, it would be plans. But that's just the best way I can answer that question. I think we could really, you know, check it again and see what the difference is, but I know the medics have a time limit that they have to be in the truck going, rolling toward that call.
And you're very pleased, obviously, with the change and...
Yes, this is a lot of change. It is a lot of change.
I mean, you know, the privatization of...
I'm getting used to it. I mean, it's a difference, a way different way of thinking. The customer's always right, they make every effort. They have given my medics the privilege, which is something else we didn't have with the county, if they go to the house and the, a lot of older people, they just say, "Well, I just don't need to go because, you know, it costs, you know, my Medicare won't cover it all, and, you know, I just can't..." They had the ability to write that call because they said, "Come on, come with us. You will never get a bill for EMS," which they have always given me that when they were doing our billing, but that was different because it was county-owned. I just couldn't hide all the things. But now, they say everybody's entitled to good quality healthcare, and they want to be part of that community. But yeah, it's been a lot of change, and I have pulled my hair out a good bit since I started, but I'm getting, I'm getting there. A lot of more technology than I was used to. I think the guys are happier there now that we're, I'm really kind of selling in, this is our third month, and so everybody's kind of settled down, and they know what we, you know, can do, and we know what to expect, and they know what to expect from us, and it's working out well.
Anybody ask any questions?
Once again, thank you for letting me come and talk about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Mitchell County Development Authority, Doug, did you get anything from Paige?
No, I did get the email explaining she had a meeting in Atlanta conflicted with our meeting, but I did not get anything.
I tried to call her today too late.
Anything for his minutes or anything.
Okay. As soon as we get the minutes, Paige will be sending us some minutes from their meetings and then she'll forward that to Doug, and then we'll get a copy of those minutes. Better Hometown Report, anything from Becca?
Well, I knew Becca is out of town, so she asked me just to cover, of course, the main thing she's working on right now is the book, the paperwork that's put together for Better Hometown to send off to DCA to make sure everything's going right with our program down here, but we've always had a lot of success with that. And thankfully, due to how busy and active our Better Hometown is, it does take a good hit to compile all of the information she needs for that. Of course, there was a great success with the play, which I'm sure Kent will talk more about, and we're still, you know, looking for more volunteers that want to help out with Better Hometown projects and looking for more opportunities for the Better Hometown to do projects and serve Pellum. So if you want to come be a part of it, please get in touch with Becca.
Okay. Appreciate it. Kent, Chamber of Commerce?
Evening, everyone. I will start with where James was talking, that the play last month was a very good success in about every respect it could be. It was a joint effort between the Chamber and Better Hometown. Both groups were able to raise some funds off that that they desperately needed to keep going. Beyond that, of the, a little over twenty-two hundred dollars was spent in what we had to do to put on the play. More than seventy-five percent of that stayed right here in Pellum. Now, there were some things like the rights to the play. Sorry, we have to pay New York for that. But anything that, whatever could be bought here in Pellum was bought here in Pellum, so we kept that money here. I've talked to different people from the Mexican restaurant, from Huddle House, that they had good nights with traffic, people wanting to get something to eat before they went out. And beyond the good entertainment, it was something that, we talked a lot about quality of life and what Pellum has to offer. Well, if people are looking at moving to a community, they want to go where there's something to do. So, and like I said, in every respect, it was a lot of work. Very grateful for all the participants that spent some sixteen weeks, ten-plus hours a week putting that together, and I think they really did a good job. I'm very pleased with how it all came out. Everybody's asking one. The next one is, I said, maybe a year. The good news is they're asking for a musical, which means I can have nothing whatsoever to do it. Other people involved in that respect. This coming weekend will be the Miss Pellum Wildlife Pageant over at that Oldham High School Auditorium. Unfortunately, I cannot tell you the name of it. I had it at work today, but I don't bring it with me. But our current reigning Miss Pellum Wildlife won a pageant in Valdosta this week, which got her a $10,000 scholarship. So it says that that pageant, and however you may feel about pageants, but we have the interest, those young people that want to continue their education and find a way to do it, and a $10,000 scholarship is nothing to sneeze at, so I'm very proud of Haley for accomplishing that, so. Coming right behind that, the first part of August, actually August 1st, with the support of Pellum Bank, Family Bank, Doco, Community Bank of Pellum, will be sponsoring the Welcome Back Breakfast for the Teachers. Be at the middle school cafeteria. All of you are certainly welcome to join us. Eight o'clock, August 1st. It's a job I wouldn't want. I'm very happy that those people are willing to go out there and tackle it every day, and all I ever hear is great things about our school system, and a lot of that goes to those teachers that are putting in that time and effort. So if you can join us, that would be greatly appreciated. Beyond that, we're rolling into Wildlife Festival. Takes months of preparation, so I probably won't have a lot new in the next few months to tell you, but we're working on that. One thing I will mention, as I mentioned before, we've got to find ways to keep the Chamber going financially. With that, we've made the decision that come our annual meeting, tickets will obviously be on sale before then, well, again, with the help of Mitchell County Chrysler Dodge, the Chamber's going to raffle off a car. Not a chance for a chance, but actually raffle off a car. So tickets at fifty dollars apiece, you'll get enough coupons to go with that ticket for local merchants that you can shop with. That'll save you the cost of the ticket right there. That'll be a good way for the Chamber to make some operating money, so you'll be hearing more about that, and as I have tickets, I don't know. That kind of is it in a nutshell. A little short and sweet, but anything I can answer anybody?
Not a chance for a chance, but a real chance.
Not a chance for a chance, but an actual chance.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent. Now, Mitchell County Development Authority, Suzanne, would you like to, you sent a report earlier to Doug.
I did, yes.
And it got to everybody. It was forwarded to all the council members via email.
I don't have anything beyond what you can read, and that's it.
Okay. Okay, those minutes from the prior meeting that you guys just had this week, last week, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Pellum City Schools isn't here, but I would like to mention while we're on them, and a word of appreciation to Dr. Arnold. A number of us from the council went and met with him requesting help with some funds to offset some costs to the city for the library here in town, the Carnegie Library. And even though things are tight for the school board as well, they were able to make a monthly, will be able to make a monthly contribution towards the Carnegie Library, which has not happened, so this is, I really very much appreciate the school board doing that. It goes a long way in showing their support of the library that we have here in town, which is a fantastic facility, and I do appreciate the school doing that. At this time, we'll move into committee reports, Administrative Committee, Councilman Taylor.
Start off with the Police Department report. We had a total of two-hundred-and-fifty 911 calls in the month of June, and inmate housing, we had a hundred and two inmates that we have for other agencies here now, so. Fire Department report. The Fire Department here in Pellum had a total of seventy-nine incidents that they responded to in the month of June. Our code enforcement officer, Lee V., responded to, with a total of fifty-seven incidents this month, so staying pretty busy. Animal Control made sixteen trips to Pellum and pounded six animals.
Chase, did you go to the Federal Association Conference or who?
Yes, sir, I did.
Is that a good meeting?
Yeah, it's a good training. And also training and meeting other prospects.
Yeah, I know you're always looking for them.
The next item of business here will be to present the Pellum Depot lease agreement between the City of Pellum and the Chamber, Pellum Chamber of Commerce. I believe you all have a copy of this lease. I don't believe there are any significant changes in this lease from prior years. Roderick Randy, is there anything you'd like to add on this lease before we announce this in order? Okay. We will need a motion to approve this lease.
I made the motion.
Second by Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
Next item, it's going to be the resolution establishing an agreement for services between the City of Pellum and the Chamber of Commerce. I believe you all have a copy of this agreement. There have been no changes between the agreement from last year. That's right there. That's great.
Well...
With the exception of the amount of...
Yeah, I was going to say...
...smaller.
Well, I'm looking at this.
I'm going to look around.
Okay.
Just the budgetary item.
But yeah.
We will need a motion to adopt this as well.
Make a motion, I agree. Send us with the change of... I'm out. I'm out, gentlemen.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes.
The next item of business is to fill a vacancy on the Pellum historic preservation commission, and I would like to offer a motion that we appoint Lenora J. Butler to the Pellum historic preservation commission for a term beginning August 1st, 2012, and ending July 31st, 2015. I made that point of the motion.
Second by motion. Second by Councilman Parker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.
And the last item we have here is an inmate housing agreement between the City of Roswell, Georgia and Pellum, Georgia to house their municipal inmates. I believe this is standard inmate housing agreement. So we will need a motion to approve this agreement between Roswell and Pellum.
Make the motion to approve that agreement.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Public Works, Mayor Proctor?
I just have one item under Public Works tonight, and this will be to declare items surplus so they can be disposed of, sold by the city, and the city manager has a list on that side of the board to handle.
Okay. I will, just for the record, read the year and make, I won't go into the VIN number, but it is on record. Nineteen eighty-one Chevrolet El Camino, nineteen ninety-eight Chevrolet Astro van, two thousand and one Mazda, and set of four twenty-two inch custom wheels and tires. This was submitted by the Pellum Police Department, this property, from a drug seizure. From Public Works, Gas, Water, and Sewer, and Department of Corrections, we have a transport van, Ford, a Dodge, round fifty eighty-six model. The van was an '07 model. Ninety-one International forty-six hundred truck, Ford F-250 four-by-four, ninety-eight Ford Crown Victoria, and an eighty-eight GMC fifteen hundred. Since we have experienced excellent response from Gov. Deals, these will be placed on Gov. Deals where bids will be taken there.
You said, was that an '07 transport van?
Right, but it has three hundred-plus thousand miles on it. It's...
How many do we have now, transport vans?
Do I have, what, three? Plus the big bus. Well, I ask for a motion to declare these items surplus to the city's needs.
I'll make the motion to declare them surplus.
Second by motion. Second by Councilman Parker. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, thank you. Motion passes. That moves us out of the committee reports. City manager's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things tonight. I'd like to recognize Vanette Austin. She had been our municipal court clerk for ten years, and Vanette retired a couple of weeks ago. We wish her the best in her retirement. Vanette did an excellent job for us as municipal court clerk. This announcement will be in the paper very soon, but I had a lot of questions as to when we will have the special election to replace Councilman Jimmy Clifton. So I'd like to, let me find it here. This will be September, I don't want me to read everything on you. The election will be held on September the eighteenth. The state sets aside these dates that we have to call these special elections on, so there's a reason why we can't hold it at the same time we have elections already taking place. Qualifying for this special election will be up here at City Hall, and it'll be from eight-thirty a.m. to four o'clock p.m. in the afternoon, beginning August the twentieth through August the twenty-fourth. Qualifying fee for this position is seventy-two dollars. Again, this will be posted up here at City Hall and will be in the newspaper in the upcoming We have a new flag flying on the flagpole over in Eubanks Park, close to the skateboard park, and I'd just like to recognize Brian Ramsey. Brian's a young boy, and Sybil Radley. They are from Megs, Georgia, and they brought that flag to us and furnished it to us for that specific purpose, to fly it over the skateboard. So that is up and waving now, and I'd like to thank Brian and Sybil for their contribution. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Doug? City Attorney?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing. I've got a couple of things I want to say, and I'll be as brief as I can, but, excuse me. I do want to say, actually, I want to ask a couple of things of the citizens of Pellum tonight during my report. It's no secret that we've been struggling for, well, since the recession here, and we're still feeling the effects of the worst economic times that we've seen since the nineteen thirties. As a city, we rely on many different sources of revenue. We rely on property taxes, hotel motel taxes, sales taxes, grants, inmate housing, natural gas and the sale of natural gas and water, business licenses, and other sources of revenue. As a general rule, it is a good practice for municipalities to keep on reserve a large percentage of what their budget is in reserves. Until, leading up to the 2009 beginning of recession and when things began to get more difficult, we were on track getting to that point. But as a result of losing such significant revenue from inmate housing, property and sales taxes and other sources, the city was unable to continue operating without using those reserves. So since the recession, around three million dollars has been cut from our budget, operating budget for the City of Pellum. That is the largest percentage cut we've ever taken since the Great Depression as a city. And I just want to put these things in perspective a little bit. Coupled with lack of revenue, and the City of Pellum has suffered from foreclosures and closing businesses as well as a result of the worldwide recession. I wish, all of us wish, we could say we know when this is going to end, but we don't, and that we would be able to restore every service provided that we were providing four years ago. However, it's been difficult at best to predict even what we can do next month and what next month will bring. People have asked over and over, "When will we get the revenue back up?" And the best answer that we can give is, "We don't know, but we're trying everything we can." Each month, we have to lean hard on other municipalities that owe us money for keeping inmates, and sometimes we're not paid for two to three months at a time because they too are suffering from this recession.
too are suffering from this recession. So, it's a domino effect. At each group of the many budget meetings that we have had over the last three years, long and sometimes painful discussions and decisions have had to be made, every business or entity that the City of Pelham works with has ideas that will work, that work best for them, but we have to consider everybody. We have to consider how these things affect everyone, not just one entity that we work with. An example, we, you know, in this country right now, there's a lot of talk about taxes, raising taxes, not raising taxes. In this, you know, if taxes were raised here to help offset some of the cost of some of the overhead that we've got, it has an effect, possibly a detrimental effect on just the people, the citizens of this town. What may seem like an easy fix in some ways can be very detrimental, can hurt others. As employees here have retired, or moved on, or been let go, we have refrained from hiring. As a result, some services that used to be quick and easy for us to accomplish can take days, if not weeks, to complete. That's just the reality. As of right now, Doug, our city manager, is acting as public works supervisor on top of his regular duties as running the city every day. Public Works has a staff of four. That's down by half of what it was last year. Because of this, immediate action cannot be taken sometimes to repair potholes, to edge streets or clean gutters, or provide other services in a timely manner when just about a year or two ago, a phone call to the city would have been all that was needed. As we move forward, we will continue to meet as a council and work with Doug to trim costs when possible. At my request, this past week, Doug emailed as many people as he could on his list, we didn't have time to get into paper, but we need to begin turning off some of the lights that Georgia Power supplies us. The first to turn off were those on Highway Nineteen. Those are the most expensive lights that we operate in the city. It will translate into an enormous amount of savings to us at this time. As Doug emailed, and I tried to emphasize, this is temporary, this isn't a permanent thing, we will, we will be looking at, and even tomorrow, we'll be meeting with Georgia Power again, to look at possibly doing this in other parts of town. But we will be working with the chief and others, and of course, city manager, and other members of the council to decide what is the best way to go about doing such a thing. That is not unprecedented. This is going on all over the state. This is something that's become common during these difficult times. There's so many things that I'd like, I mean, we could, I could talk about and say, but all is not bad news. It feels like it sometimes. But there's two things I just, I feel like I need to ask the citizens, and that is first, pray for our revenue, and very specifically, for our inmate housing, and, in my opinion, the Hand Trading Company building, both of which, the inmate housing, Chief McCormick is working very, very hard, along with Doug, to help us find a source of revenue to get us to a place where our revenue turns around. We are not a municipality that charges for power, so we don't have that extra money coming in. We can't. So, we are limited in the sources of revenue that we have. We also need to find a large tenant for the hand building. That is a treasure of a building in the middle of this town, filled up with people could turn, turn the town around. Both of those could be sources of revenue in the long run for the city, and I would just ask for prayers for both of those. The second thing I would ask for is grace. Now, we are, so many people have been so nice to Doug and the city, in the city about, you know, having to wait for certain things to happen. As we struggle to work through these times, please be patient with us. Doug and the staff at City Hall are doing all that they can do to get back to everyone needing assistance. Please know that we take all concerns and complaints and problems very seriously, and doing all that we can with a limited staff. However, by extending grace and patience, we can all do a lot more. To say that we are frustrated as a council will be an understatement. We've had contentious meetings up here, we all get along great. This is a very good council, but it's just frustrating. I mean, it is just frustrating. I don't know how else to say that. And we, we all have the best interest of this city at heart, and we're doing everything we can. However, words of encouragement and understanding can calm nerves, extinguish anger, and help find solutions. If for any reason anybody, any citizen's not getting the attention or results that they need from City Hall, then I ask that they let me know, or let someone sitting up here know. We meet twice every month as a council, and we discuss everything that comes to us. And we have opportunity to talk about whatever's on our heart, whatever's on our minds about the City of Pelham. We'll continue to do so, we'll meet more often when we need to, but, and we will do with everything within our power to move Pelham forward to better and more prosperous days, which I do believe are going to come. With that being said, I would like, if it, unless there's any objection, a form of this information to be put in the utility statements next month, unless there's any objection on the council. And there'll be more, you know, Reginald and the Pelham Journal have been very, very gracious in the past and allowed us space to put information in the paper, and Reginald, that information was emailed to you. So, therefore, that could be included, I would appreciate that. That's all I've got as far as my report tonight. Anybody got anything else?
I'd just like to say that I support everything that the mayor is saying, and we work very hard together, trying to work out our tough ends and everything. It's not a deal where we just vote, like you see us in the meeting. Our workshops, we get down and get down to the nitty-gritty on all this stuff. We talk about every aspect and everything that we need to do in the city, about what we can cut and what we can't cut, and what we can do, what we cannot do, that's what the funds are available. But we work hard to try to make Pelham better for all, and not just the mayor saying, or he saying, but we all in this thing together as a council, and we do get down to fight about this stuff that's going on with the city.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion that we adjourn.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you.